Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular board meeting dated Monday, June 20th, 2022. I've got six o'clock. Catherine, who do you take the role?
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Kuntz will not be here. Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Triber.
Here.
Trustee Sodder.
Yeah.
And President Lino.
Here. Okay, and if you'll all rise to meet for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, it takes us to item number four, which is our public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda item? Seeing none. Okay, it'll take us to consent agenda, which we do not have. So we'll get right into the meat of it. Go with item A if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the number of Class G liquor licenses regarding Infinity Banquet Hall.
A second.
All right. Is there any discussion that we needed on this one? Would you like to address the board? Was it, who was here? Your request, got it.
So I'm requesting approval for my business, one business license, a liquor license. Based on the fact I was gonna try to do the catering, to have the caterers to come in and do the serving of alcohol. But that's a whole nother can of worms because I want to be in control of it. So that way, if someone is over consuming alcohol, I can cut it off. Caterers, I don't know, they might want their last five dollars and serve the last alcohol that might send somebody to the hospital. So, so basically, I want to be in control of that. I've done everything, oh my God, I've had some ups and downs, I tell you. But I'm there. I'm there with the banquet hall. We're opening, we're operating. So the last piece of the puzzle is my liquor license.
Okay. So all buried issues have been covered then?
Basset?
Or basset rather, buried.
Yes, yes, I have my basset.
Okay.
My employee have their basset, the ones that we work for, which is my son and my daughter, so.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No questions.
No? Okay, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Triber.
Yes.
Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
Good luck.
Welcome.
So much, oh y'all just don't know, it's been a, oh.
Thank you for your perseverance.
Thank you.
All right, well then that'll take us to item B, if we could have a motion.
It's for the discussion and direction regarding special event application for Rosie O'Hara's Public House.
Great. Gary, you wanna give us a rundown?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just come up to the podium.
I don't know if you guys, my life is kind of, I got involved with this group, you know, entertainer that plays out at my place is Joe Gonzalez. He's in the, very in the military a lot. I've had a couple generals go down for lunch, you know, at my place and stuff. And they might wanna, you know, benefit for this teen Rubicon. If anybody's not familiar with it, they're a military driven, they're not solely just ex-military people. It's like almost 400,000 members to it. And like we had a meeting, we were gonna meet, you know, try to get in here last week on Tuesday and stuff. And one was missing, but the main guy that's involved was here. But like you said, they're off Yellowstone kinda help, that's what they do. And what it is, is they're all the disasters, that, you know, Iraq fighting any fires and, you know, the west coast and everything. I'm just coming in, you know, hopefully I can, you know, get this on. And so it's short notice, I tried to get it, you know, we could, for like the last meeting and I heard there was another meeting. So I'm gonna push them to the end, pass the time. I passed out in people's mailboxes and stuff today in my neighborhood. And I've got the blessing of the ones that I know, you know, for this. And like I'm driven not to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. And it'd be, you know, well organized, and I've got the support of, they've got many on their end. But I've got many on my end that are jumping on. I'll have at least 100, 150 people on my end just watching, doing everything through that whole day. Because it's gonna be, you know, we're not gonna do it from 11:00 in the morning. And that's just when we open up. It starts, the music starts at 12:00, you know, and goes until 11:00. And the last one being not on the street, tent, stage one, in the front, where it's normal. So I'm trying to keep it even, you know, quiet. So up to 9:00, you know, the music would be kinda like on that side street in Michigan. And then before that, but I have, you know, whether you wanna pass around, how I have it laid out. I was hoping to get, or look into it if I had to, you know, if I could use that white fencing. Because this is right now on YouTube, they're filming it, there's some of the stuff's gonna be going on channel a lot of them. And this should have been in like Carpenter Park, but someone got reasons, they backed out. They wanted their own little thing, and I'm going like, it would have definitely helped them tremendously. I'm just looking, I'm a help kinda guy. I, I mean, at my festival, I'm lowering the prices of my beer. I'm not doing it for, I'm doing it for these guys, they're charging $20 at the door, doing stuff. That's a nice amount. They're, I'm sure, like anything else, I'll pass a boot, try to raise a little bit more. That's fine, but like me, I'm just, you know, I lower my prices. I'm not, it's like a festival. So that's why I'm coming, I'm in there on short, short notice with everybody. But I, it would never get out of hand or anything like that. We're not, we're not like that, I'd never allow that. And you'd, if you'd let me know, if you need like security, we have a bunch of people that are going to be security. And these are like our ex-military guys, and it's not going, I've told them, we have a meeting, so I can meet with them all. There's no violence or hand and stuff, you know, but you're big people. I'll have my people next to me that can talk. They'll be intimidated by you guys standing there. So it's just kind of, I mean, it's a festival worth, I don't, you know, festival, it's, the only type of problems I've ever had is St. Patrick's Day Parade Day. It's really, that's about the only time. Once or twice, we've called a couple times for assistance with the police, but we don't do it. You get those days, you're just on your hands, on your normal crowd. So, I mean, that's what this is for. I mean, if anybody's saying, very good lineup, you know, Seventh Heaven would be coming down, and Tony Ocean, people know Ziggy in the Zoo, Cave Dwellers, Caesar salad, it's, it'd be a nice thing. And like you're saying, they should raise a pretty decent amount of money, just, just from, you know, the $20. And it's just like, you know, I'm giving, everybody, even when you have band members that are playing, who are playing for nothing. You know, they're all putting in $20, it's like they're at the door, this is for a good cause.
Gary, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Since I can see my house almost on your little drawing. Where it's going to be. For one thing, you answered my questions about how late the music's gonna be and the fact that you're moving the bands, the later bands up to the front.
Right.
Where they play right now. I can't hear music when they're up at the front. I live three doors down from Rosie's, and I cannot hear any music at night when they play in the front. So that's perfect. And that answered my main concern about the kids who live at Vine, Michigan. If they were gonna, if it was gonna be the later bands playing late at night. It does look like this is a little bit more on to Michigan than they have been in the past.
You know, I own the house right next door, at Vine, Michigan.
Right.
I'm looking to do the tent right where, at the end of Vine, Michigan.
Okay.
And I've talked with my neighbor next to me. And I asked him if I could keep that parking mall, I'm not gonna block him in his driveway.
Yep.
But keep that parking for like this, the band.
Yeah.
You know, you can get maybe like six cars.
Yeah.
If you're using the whole street, it would be blocked off.
Yep.
So you could get six cars and I can keep it moving and not, not bother.
That was my other question, is how close it was to seven. So you've answered my questions right now.
Does it matter to me? Please ask if there's anything you need to ask me or what I need.
She, did you have any issues with closing off the street or Phil's not filled?
So the only, oh, so the only thing that I would, you know, have to work with or have a conversation about is parking and traffic flow. Not necessarily the street itself, if the residents are fine with it.
Right.
You know, whether or not there's something worked out to the north, because to the south, our own downtown parking is what it is. So I don't know that it could take anymore from this, but is there something we can do to the north? And if there's some kind of shuttling arrangement or something, but if you do, I appreciate it.
We have a ballet going on, I didn't even mention it. We got a ballet going on. And we're either going to be parking up by the mall, and what they're gonna just do is drop off their parties, go up, we'll pick you up, bring you back, when you're ready to go, we'll take you out to your vehicle, come pick up your party. I'm going to actually District 300 to see if they'll open their gates and let me park there. If you need security. That's where I would be, it'd be a lot nicer if they could walk there. Literally, it'd only be four or five blocks, but it's just like, you know, it wouldn't require a walk, but it still would do ballet parking better. So I'd rather just have closer, people getting a little nervous for your car, but I'm not driving your car. Just making you update you to your, you're going back. I forgot to mention that, I apologize.
Cool, that's great.
The other thing was, you mentioned that about the white fencing, are you looking for the village to supply the white fencing? And then you guys set up or?
This is a, is a nice look. I'll do the kinda mesh fencing. I very love, I fence it all behind, I have to come back to my neighbor. I wanted to get out there, I didn't have time to measure it, it's about 25 feet to connect the fencing behind me. And then all I have to do is to the property, you know, on my, at Vine, Michigan, I'll take it from the back of my fence and I'll do the fencing to the front. I was just looking just for, it looks nicer.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's it. And it's not gonna, you know, it's out of way where there won't be anything set up like that. Because if somebody asks me, you do it down at like one entrance to come in, I, that's why I would like to have two. Because I mean, the one in the front, I would do for handicap. And they would never have to do it. You go to the other one, you'll be going up curves and not, you know, if you used to get on the property in the front stuff, you can be up, you're not going up curves or anything like that. So I'd be my main entrance right in the front on Wall Street, and then I'd look to do a sidewalk right there as the main entrance to come in to, for the establishment.
Then I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize if it's, if it's in your, in the recap. But the setup time for the fencing and closing off the street and setting up the tent, which would effectively close down the street, is that in, in this information?
Well, I have, I have everything here, I've, I was hoping, but you could tell me. I was hoping to close it down from, at the risk, close it down from Friday, like noon until Sunday, like till noon. Events are one day event, but those tents are a little, little something to get up. You know, I'm just trying to, try and work with them, because he's telling me, he's on the staff and everything like that. I go like, well, I'm at the mercy of the village, so I'll let you know.
All right.
I mean, the worst thing is just that we don't do it till, you know, crack or dawn on, on Saturday. But then I don't want people pounding stuff in there, you know.
I was gonna say, I personally prefer Friday. As opposed to 16 on Saturday.
So we, if, you know.
Friday would probably make more sense, only because you never know what'll come up or go wrong with anything you're setting up. And if you're last minute like that, then it isn't gonna happen, it'll cause more problems, I think.
Is the plan to close Michigan at First Street except for like the band traffic? Or do you want Michigan to be open? Michigan, yeah, Michigan and First, so like the other end of Michigan?
Oh, no, I'm.
Will close that?
No, you wouldn't have to. I mean, I don't want to bother.
Well, I'm just like, closing, closing except for like residents. So like the residents would still be able to come and go, which is closing to like through traffic.
You think that's fine, they wouldn't bother me at all, I mean.
Okay. Chief and Phil, do you have a?
Where's the stage, that's my curiosity. I think that's that.
I, I, I'd like to set it from somewhere like in the middle of the house on Vine, Michigan, towards the river.
So, so.
Oh, yeah, the stage will be actually on Michigan, yes.
So then we would, we, to answer your question, Trustee Britton, we would close Michigan at First.
Okay.
For local traffic. Did you have a close at the stage or?
Yeah, right. I mean, there could still be parking for the band and things like that, near the stage, but just for local.
Close at First.
Cool.
So the only other thing I would have is liquor control outside of the, the event area. Liquor doesn't go down the street.
Oh, wait, wait.
And if you had the volunteers, no way you could pull this stuff.
No, we couldn't, and that would be critical.
You, you, you know, I'm not gonna say it's a hundred, there's no way. I'm saying, because it's in somebody's purse, unless I'm gonna have a purse check or doing whatever, but if you want that, I'll do that. No, no, I agree, it's only a sound. My people know to pull everything, I mean, you know, you sit inside, you know. But I'd rather, I'd tell them to pull, because I don't want anybody shoving it. I send you in there, two, three hours, I'm making, oh my God, my full drink, I'm gonna chug it, and I'll just take it. And what I'm gonna do is give them like a, you know, a drink thing for another day, come on down, you know. And you, but today come down tomorrow or something, and you get a, you know, drink.
That's a good way to go.
I mean, I'd rather talk like that, because that's what I'll do.
Yeah.
I don't want to get, you know, that's where you get the fights.
Right.
Happens to fit, you know, you, you know, I mean, you're gonna pay $3 for a 16-ounce beer, not too much.
No. But no, the chief's point is a good one, that just walking out, a lot of times, you know, after a while, people may not realize they're just gonna leave. And sometimes it happens that they just walk away.
Right, right.
An open container.
Oh, to the hiding thing, you know, the pouches and the, it's like you're not involved.
No, no, it's gonna be a concern, no, no.
Yeah, with, with the controlling of the entrances and only really having to, having it mostly fenced off and not really even having parking behind the stage, I think it's a good, it feels solid to me. It feels kinda like what we do for Thursday Thursdays.
You know, it doesn't invade the apartments across the street, because they're willing to get out, it's on water and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd take it out with Joe, if you want, or, or, or stuff. Who knows, and, and he, he said, if you want to use my, I don't know, the streets are big enough.
Yeah.
Time back, we used to have the Oktoberfest events right in the exact same location, right there at the end of Michigan, in water. Put up a big tent, and, you know, I don't recall there ever being an issue. But, you know, as long as security and you're gonna handle that, I don't see any problems.
Well, and frankly, those weren't as neatly fenced as this looks like it's going to be.
Probably not. Phil, is there a problem with the white fence, the picket fence lining it up?
No, we did for, we set it up for the Duke's barbecue, this best.
Right.
We could do it around the depot.
Yeah. I mean, as long as we got it.
It doesn't take much, I mean, what do you mean, half a bar, which you found at the depot, not even, what do you say?
But it's a little more.
Do it, we'll pick it up, or?
Yeah, no, and I, I think it's a little more, I don't wanna say confining, but it tends to hold in a little bit better than, you know, a vinyl fence. It's almost like a fabric, that's really not much of a turn.
It's not like we won't have, I'll, I'll have, you know, every 20 feet, there'll be a pair of bodies.
Yeah.
Going all the way around this thing, so if I had to do that, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, it's a better look too, if we could help out with that, then I would say it'd be a good way to go, so. Okay, cool. And there's no other events down here on the 16th of July, so I don't think they're gonna interfere with anything. Have you talked to Tom Roser at the BRICS?
I haven't tried to talk to Tom, you know, I.
Cause he might.
It's hard to get a talk to Tom in these days, I mean.
Hard to get ahold of him.
You don't understand, that, the BRICS, that's about the BRICS thing down there.
Yeah, well, then I know they've got weekend events all the time too, so it might not be an option, but if it is, you know, it's worth looking into.
Yeah, but D300.
Something like this, for calls like this, he might very well do it, you know, and down by his, if I go there, I'm gonna go to the school.
Exactly. If they'll, if they'll help out.
I mean, the distance is probably about the same.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I don't wanna intervene to him and stuff like that.
It's cool.
He likes to keep those for his own events and stuff, and I get it, and.
I'm sad I'm not gonna be in town.
Yeah, I'll be here. I'll be there.
Yeah, I'll be here, like, oh, the other, I mean, the only other thing I mean, I didn't do is, is like, sign, those look like signs and stuff. And I, would I be able to put that on the side, I always, you'll see a sign every now and then, right at the corner.
Is it sandwich boards you're talking, or?
Pardon? Just a banner, you know, you, you know, I'm getting, it's the same kinda like thing like this. But it'll be a banner across the lower part, under my windows, the big hall stuff, you know, so it reads that way. And if I could put one on the, on the side for when people come in the side, where there used to be little campy thing, like right now.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
I could put one on there.
Put it on the electronic sign too. Put it on the electronic sign.
Yeah, he took a form.
Yeah, we can help advertise for you.
Awesome. Yeah.
Why not try the guy fill the stuff out, and that's why I'm behind with the people, I'm sorry, but it's just, it's, it's hard to find out.
Last minute, go down.
And it's good though. I have them, it's just I, I'm doing all the work.
No, as long as you've got facilities taken care of, we've got containment and then security, I think, that's a, from now on, traffic control.
Double park in, in the front part of my lot, you know, they've got a big fancy, uh, Rubicon Jeep, you know, that's like, they're big, it's painted red, and, you know, it's, it's painted, it's just for, you know, festivals and fundraising and stuff. So it should be a nice little, little thing out in front. And I told them, it'd be a lot better to have gone there a couple days before. To have it on, what's going on, during the weekend, you know, just like, anything like that, bright red, just stick out.
Awesome.
Okay, cool. Well, then we'll work with you on the fence and get that.
Erica, do you need anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Good luck.
Thank you, and I sure appreciate it, and sorry I'm dressed like this, but.
Working.
My tree's down today.
All good.
And if you haven't been, it's a lot nicer looking.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary.
Okay, then we'll just continue moving on to item C here, if I could have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve a parameters ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds in an amount not to exceed $2 million for Santa's Village.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Erica, could you run us through this a little bit?
Sure, so if you recall, a few months back, we had been approached by Santa's Village, who were looking to do an expansion project. They actually had two, two expansion projects. One was the Lazy River, one was the renovation of the Polar Dome. They're ready to go with the Lazy River, and that was the one which, which was more immediate and fairly compelling from a revenue generating standpoint. They'll be able to allow almost 600 more people in per day, which would be amusement tax and sales tax to the village. So worked with them to come up with an arrangement where we could borrow what they're asking for, which is 1.75 million, even though this says up to 2 million. They always put a little buffer in in case anything comes up. But right now, the ask is 1.75 million. So with that, they will construct the Lazy River in the fall, and it will be ready for Oak Spring opening in 2023. So the second piece of this is that there's going to be an agreement between us and Santa's Village outlining the parameters of repayment terms, which will coincide with the life of the TIF. So this, the funding source for our portion, the village's portion, which is 35% proposed, would come from fund balance of that TIF. And then 65% of the loan and interest would be repaid by the business.
Which comes to about $80,000 by my calculations, so over the next eight years. And as long as we know that the TIF has got that coming in, and the balance of the TIF can support it, then I guess we're okay. I like the idea of helping out, especially if we're gonna expand on this, we'll see certainly an increase in the guests that come to Santa's Village. So the idea is to grow, so. Does anybody have any other questions on it? So my only, my only fear is that if we're gonna be taking on bonds to do this, this isn't a general obligation, right?
So this is a taxable bond paid for through TIF proceeds. In the event that there's not any funding in the TIF, then it is incumbent upon the village to pay this bond. So in discussions with Santa's Village, we're asking for this loan to be securitized, which basically means if they default, we are leaning the property. And then if it gets sold or anything like that, if it were to close, then we would, you know, potentially be made whole if there were a new owner. But there is some level of risk involved in this, but the past performance has been solid. The, the water park performs really well, especially with the temperatures we've been seeing recently. And so I, I think there's a high degree of confidence that they can execute on this project and then, you know, follow through with the commitment to repay. But I just wanted to ask Lance, I feel, I feel like there's a longer worded motion that has to be made per the ordinance. So can you double check that?
I thought it was pretty specific, and I don't see a reflection there.
Yeah, so the motion would be to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $2 million taxable general obligation bonds of the Village of East Dundee, Canaan Creek Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital projects of the village, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on said bonds, and authorizing proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. That would be the motion.
Thank you. Now I get to redo that.
Say what he said.
Yeah, what he said. I'll take a motion.
So basically our, I mean, if in the event that the eight years or nine years, whatever's left on the TIF didn't bring in enough, then it's coming out of the general fund, or where we are able to pull it, correct?
Correct. So right now, there is a significant fund balance in this TIF fund, enough to cover our entire portion plus the interest. So as long as Village Board doesn't spend that money, because it's allocated to this, we're fine.
The, the real risk isn't that you won't have the 35% part from the TIF, that's there. It's that if Santa's Village, something happens, and then the, we'll see what we can negotiate in the RDA, which is, as Erica said, the second part of this. And that's where the security will be in there.
Yeah, so in, in passing this ordinance tonight, we're, we're, in a sense, the wheels are in motion and we'll continue to move forward, but we are not bound. If at any point in time we don't get to a satisfactory agreement with Santa's Village, we can stop the process and go a different direction, step one.
And originally, they wanted 50/50, so 65/35 is something they've agreed?
Yes.
Yeah, 50 is a little, just.
So much.
Little too, yeah, you just don't have it, so.
And the, the bonds, does that work as, like, the village takes out a bond and they're the ones paying it back? Or we're issuing a bond where we're putting money from our fund? How does the bond work?
So we, we go to capital markets and borrow the full 1.75. Right now, it's looking like banks are gonna give a better rate than some of the other institutional investors that would typically give a bond to a village. So they, the company we're working with has done sort of a test of the waters to see what the rates look like. And because they're fluctuating so much right now, it's a little difficult to predict. But, you know, they're, they're sensing, they got like three very good rates from some lenders. And going that route, we don't have to actually go through a process of being rated again, which I actually wanted to do, because I feel like we've made some really good progress towards increasing our bond rating. But with this sort of lender-driven route, we don't have to get rerated, so maybe next year, but.
So if we were to get rerated, reevaluated with that, could we possibly get a better rate? Could we insist on it?
So there wouldn't be, it actually costs money to be rerated. And so unless we are going to go the route of institutional investors who would be purchasing this, or who'd be supplying the revenue that would, you know, they would be the bond holders, it wouldn't make sense for us to pay for that if a private bank is going to end up giving us a better rate.
They know where we live.
Right. So we'll borrow the full 1.75, the TIF will pay the 35% annually, and the, the business will pay the, the 65% annually. And the, the business will pay the, the set sixty-five percent annually for, I think, seven years until the, the life, that, that TIF is done in seven years. So the structure of it is a little bit, um, backloaded because the, there's not a lot of runway for them to pay back. If they, if they were going to borrow this from a regular bank, they probably would borrow for ten years or fifteen years. But because they're going to get a very good rate and because we're paying thirty-five percent of it, I think their first year costs are much lower and then their out-year costs are much higher. So they have a little bit of time to establish the client's hell and develop a cash flow to pay the bonds.
So let me ask them too, if they were to get, you know, halfway through this and realize they needed more funding to really do what they want the right way, would we be on the, the hook for thirty-five percent of an additional amount of borrowing? Are we just up to the two mil?
The cap right now is actually the one point seven five. That's all they've asked for. That's what they said it's going to cost.
Okay.
Um, hopefully we can get the shovel in the ground soon before any more further costs escalate. Um, this was a one million dollar project, I think, a year ago.
So this one is just to put the wheels in motion to get to the starting point, really. So is there any other?
Do I need to read the whole thing back in or can I just say what you said?
You can say so.
Okay. I did, but I just wanted to make sure I don't need to like do anything.
As long as that's what you want, the record, the record will show. There's no need to do that. I mean, I'm sure you can do that.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Yes.
And Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Okay. Good thought here. Item D then, if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to accept a proposal from Lauterbach and Amen LLP for professional auditing services.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Brandon, would you like to run through any of this?
Um, the village has been using Lauterbach and Amen for our auditing services for about four or five years now. Um, and it's the tradition to go out to RFP at the end of their contract just to ensure that we're getting the best pricing for our services rendered. Um, again, we found that Lauterbach was the best, um, or provided the best cost for our services. And we are pretty satisfied with the services that they provide. Um, the other thing that I mentioned within the memo is that Lauterbach provides auditing services for our accounting or for our police pension fund. They also provide actuarial services. Um, so we have, um, over the last few years, used a separate auditing firm for the police pension just to ensure that, you know, we have a pretty good audit and that accounting firms are auditing themselves. Uh, so here proposing that we continue the process, um, and use Sikkich again for the police pension and that the village cover the cost of their audit, um, as it will typically be wrapped into our general audit. But because we do have to separate them, that will cover the cost. And it's, um, no more than six thousand over the course of the next four or five years.
From Sikkich?
Uh, Sikkich for the police pension fund.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So is there anything to the logic that would suggest that regardless of cost, we should be changing out audit, uh, services? Um, the legal services or anything else? I mean, how we do the, you, municipalities ought to be rotating that out just as a matter of procedure? So, I mean, do we, do we just go with cost here?
A good reason to do so, but I feel like over the last few years, we've had a lot of turnover and it's just not really the best time, especially for auditing services. And because it's just me. Um, I would recommend not doing it right now, but we definitely would to do something like that.
So this is just reopening for another four years?
For five years with a two-year option.
Five years with a two-year option, okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? I mean, they know us, so, I mean, that's one of the positives, so.
We can always change the contract if we need to, if they're not satisfied.
Well, which I doubt would be the case, but it's just a matter of housekeeping is the one I'm thinking of. Any other questions, huh?
Catherine? Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Yes.
And Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Okay, so then that takes us to item E, which, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to waive the competitive bidding and award contract to Current Technologies Corporation for the purchase or replacement of a closed-circuit audio/video system in the amount of fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and thirty cents and access control system in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and five cents.
Second.
Second, okay. Chief, you want to run us through this?
Thank you. Uh, I come to you with kind of an unexpected expense. You know, certainly if we would have known this was coming online, it would have been part of the budget process. Uh, but we have found ourselves in a, in a position where, uh, it's kind of an, an emergency purchase because of the condition of the, of the current access control and video, and especially the video system. Our current video system isn't able to be repaired or upgraded because it is embargoed, uh, where it was originally imported from by the Department of Homeland Security for public buildings and facilities. Uh, so we're kind of in a tough position. So, uh, you know, as, as we've looked at different systems, uh, kind of the state-of-the-art system is to go, uh, cloud-based rather than an in-house DVR and the maintenance for that and a server. And, uh, along with that, we've had some significant downtime. Matter of fact, I came in this morning and the screens were dark again on our video system, which is also, uh, controls the depot as well. And as you know, we've had some challenges there in the last month or so. So it's a, it's a very, uh, serious concern for me on officer safety and also our liability if something were to occur in the building and booking, and also some legal requirements when somebody's arrested and brought into the building uh, for a significant felony that, uh, really what, what you need to have is, is video from cradle to grave, meaning from the time you take them in custody and bring them into the building to the time they leave and, and go to the county. So, uh, you know, we do have a separate system for the interrogation piece, uh, that is statutorily required, uh, that we just had to replace too because that went bad. Uh, but this is a, an unfortunate but significant, uh, issue that, that we're requesting some, uh, support for.
I got just a couple of questions on it then. If given the, I don't know, antiquated condition of the equipment, if you will, then obviously there's no salvage value, correct?
No, and as a matter of fact, because we can't resell it or anything, there may be some, a few cameras here or there that aren't part of the embargoed system because they're, the cameras appear like they may even be a few mixed in for some reason. Uh, so there's that piece. The one thing I wasn't able to capture is a, which I believe will end up being a fairly significant savings, is the IT support that's been an expense to try to keep getting this thing online all the time. And, you know, as a stopgap measure, we've actually had to have, uh, our staff go in the server room and unplug it and try to plug it back in to get it to reboot and get it to work. And that might go for a day or two and then it goes down again, so.
So, okay, um.
And also I have Mr. Ramon Bassett from Current Technologies here, if you'd like to have any questions about the system or anything or about their firm or, uh, who specialize in, in, uh, public sector, public safety and, and do a lot of work with municipalities all across the region.
Is that this system?
So yes, the, those are the brochures I, I put at the dais before the meeting on both the, uh, video security and the access control. It's, uh, it's, uh, totally expandable too because, uh, Eric and I have talked about some desire in the future build-out and doing some more security enhancement on the village hall side too. So this would all be able to be rolled into that along with the cameras that, that will be used. Uh, we'd get a lot more, uh, ability out of them, even at the depot and potential criminal incidents, uh, up and down River Street. Then we could even add cameras as long as we can get an internet connection to it, which is what's the exciting part is about, uh, having a cloud-based and, and not, uh, just within our walls.
So the only, you know, the comments I have, the idea of waiving the bid process concerns me just a bit. So if we're, or are we? Sure. I mean, first off, I guess, is it in the interest of time that we're going to go ahead and waive that? Secondly, are we comfortable with the idea that we're not going to be paying a whole lot more by avoiding that?
Right. So a couple of things. One is I did get a, a kind of a unofficial, uh, pricing from, from one cam, another camera vendor that was also a cloud-based system. Uh, and that was well over eighty thousand just for the cameras, the system alone, not even the access control. And then to find out that those cameras were also proprietary. And these cameras could be used if, if say at the end of the five years, uh, the, the board or administration decided to go back to an in-house DVR system, everything is in place and all we'd have to do is buy a server and hook them back up and they'd be able to be used. So, uh, the other thing with this is that we've talked about from, from a staff perspective is, is looking at this organization towards future IT needs and some of the other projects that, uh, that are ongoing too is, is potential because of their expertise, especially on the public safety sector too.
And is there any limitation on the distance that can be, uh, applied to the system? So for instance, if we have, um, if we're, if our, if the system is located centrally here in this building, would we be able to, for instance, uh, if we have the parking difference and one, one tab or even further, how far out can we go?
I think as long as we can get internet service to it, but if Mr. Bassett's here, if you have any technical questions on the system, I'd be glad to have him come up.
No, I'm just wondering, are there any limitations to distance then?
Depending on the scenario, you can even go up to, if there's even line of sight, there's a way that we can go up to three miles.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, but in this scenario, that would be needed, but.
So we could be out of East Dundee by then, so. Great, great. So, yeah, is there a significant portion of the cost attributable to storage? I know it's cloud-based, so I really think that the cost, I mean, storage is cheap.
That, if you could break that down.
I struggle with the, with the, I mean, is it, is it a situ, a situation where like for record retention, you're going to go ahead and accept what you have and we're going to give you a deal, but it's when you want it back where you pay? And that's when you're at the mercy of whoever's holding it. And it's, you know, if it's cloud-based, it, I mean, it really shouldn't be that expensive.
So, um, to answer the question, you actually, each camera has a sixty-day retention on it.
Okay.
And so it's not actually, uh, when you go to get the data, then it goes up to the, the cloud and then you get it. So you're not utilizing all this space on the, um, the cloud.
So it's like a time-based retention model?
Yeah, so sixty days is what we recommend.
And just auto deletes or how? I mean, after the sixty days?
Yeah, now, now you can save if you want certain.
Yeah, just on the off-chance that there's a case where we need to for further.
And actually sixty days is pretty robust. I think we have five right now. Which is a concern as well. If all of a sudden something comes up or we get notified if something happened or, yeah. So unless we know about it in order to save it like we would now, then we'd end up having to save it to, to a CD or a DVD.
Right.
So the sixty days is a typical retain, that's better than a typical retention for an in-house video system to be able to, as Ramon said, be able to grab it and then save it to the cloud. But that first in, first out.
Before the deletion, then we would be able to download it to a hard medium or some sort of?
Yeah, we could. And also it is, um, there's a way you can save that in a format that is, um, core visible. And you can, uh, password protect it, you can have a water stamp on it and everything that's all nice and secure and, and easy to submit to whoever's attorney or court or.
So that allows us to be able to, for instance, give the state's attorney's office a password for a particular file to grab it instead of having the staffing to have to download it, save it to DVD, send it to them, you know, the, the old-fashioned.
Good. Does their company provide the training then for everyone?
Yes.
Do the cameras record automatically like license plates and log that or no?
So, um, we have it, uh, another way to save, um, storage is you can set it for motion and appearance and as built-in AI. Uh, now depending on where we put them, we'll determine if they can read a certain license plate or so.
And is this, uh, budget or proposal for just replacing our existing cameras or adding and getting more coverage in more areas? Like you mentioned, cradle to grave or their, um, upgrades in our coverage in this?
So we have a fairly, uh, robust video system right as far as placement is concerned. And then these cameras have more ability to do some things. We also want to look at placement at the depot though, if it makes sense, or, or where to move them, where to get a better, better shot of the street too, uh, for any, any potential activity. Uh, but, uh, there is an additional, uh, door that we're adding to it and also we're looking at, uh, the front door of the village hall and being able to add that to it as well. That's not part of the, I don't believe it's part of the quote right now. We're still getting a number on what they would need just to add it. But it's a lot simpler because they just have to get power to it and, uh, you know, and be able to hook to the, to the internet. Luckily, the cabling in our, in our building is, is very good, so there's a significant savings there in, in installation cost.
So would any of this equip the cruisers as well?
No, that's going to be a whole nother conversation for the next budget year when we talk about the cars and the body cams for next budget year. I mean.
Can you handle that though?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so maybe we can bundle something together.
I mean, the positive part about this, of course, is, uh, you know, we're not spending the ninety-six thousand on the two cars this year that are, that are in the budget. Uh, and I contacted, because I know I get asked, Enterprise today and they, they sent in the check request for the, for they're buying from us. So we should start, we should see that hundred twenty thousand dollar check back to us pretty soon. And I believe they contacted the village clerk today to get the signed titles, copies of them, so we get that moving. So, so, uh, budget-wise, other than making this change, uh, we, we at least have the money to pay for it, so.
Chief, can you just touch on some, a question that he asked that I don't think was answered completely? As far as license plates, we're not actively LPR-ing anything. We're just.
No.
Storing information. And if there were an incident, then we would look at the video. But absent an incident, we're not scanning these cameras for license plates.
No, what, it has the AI capability with these cameras, so in this case, what it would be is if I'm looking for a plate A, B, C, it'll let me know if it, if it got there, you know, or if it became in view if I'm looking for something. But as far as like a database or, you know, going to a, uh, you know, a system with, uh, with LPR, you know, one of the two major companies that are, that are in our area, Flock or, uh, uh, through Motorola, this isn't that. This has capabilities for it and really helps an investigative process because we could also look backwards too if the cameras are facing, get some of that info for looking for something, but only if it's on a video in particular.
So this is more live surveillance, more live feed?
Or historical lookup but not tracking?
Right.
Or logging? Like, cause you could scan people's faces and cars and have a log of where everybody is all the time, but you're saying it wouldn't save all of that info, it, or it would, but only if you seeked it out, could you pull it?
Right.
But does it log people's faces as well? Does it?
It's based on appearance and likeness. So, um, because here in Illinois you can't do facial recognition. So it, it can tell the built-in AI. You can tell if it's a, you know, the person's a female, male. You can search based on, it, it looks at, um, like your gait and your, all your movements and similarities to where you can go and look at. Plus you can say, I'm looking for, uh, a male in a red shirt with a black, um, backpack. And you can search for that. And instead of spending hours and hours looking through hours of tape, you can, um, go and save tons of time for investigating.
I think it sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Can ID people because that's how everybody got their four hundred dollar check from.
Right, right.
I'm just really disappointed in the system we have because it's not that old.
No, it's unfortunate that, you know, but.
Tis what it is.
So one, one last thought. I do like that it has all these features, like I have a camera somewhere where it'll tell you there's a person so you know and you can check and make sure if somebody's breaking in. So I'm guessing at like public, uh, like the water treatment to know if a person is there versus a deer, um, and that there's smart alerts you can set up, like if certain things happen, uh, would there be visibility from the village on what type of smart alerts are set up just to make sure that there's not, uh, there's kind of ethical AI, uh, issues to concern, like to be con- uh, sedative of, to make sure that there's not certain types of people that trigger alerts and other types of people don't trigger alerts, those kinds of things?
Well, a good question. What, during the training process, our staff will sit down and we can include whoever wants to be part of it because there's rule, it's a rule-based, um, search. So we can, you know, we pretty much create any rule to search for just about anything. So we will take your, uh, feedback and input and we can tailor to whatever your needs are.
Okay, sounds good.
And this total of the eighty, just less than eighty-one thousand is, um, for the equipment and the servicing for the period of five years?
Correct. Licensing, training.
Maintenance. Okay.
Anything else?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triber?
Yes.
And Trusty Sodder?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to our final item, F, where you could have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending section seventy-two point zero one parking regulations to include no parking upon any grass, lawn, or dirt on properties.
Second? Okay, discussion, um.
I have.
Well, I'm just gonna ask you, do you have a little background on this one a little bit?
Sure, so just, so everybody's understanding what we're asking for here. Currently, the zoning code prohibits parking on dirt, grass, or lawn, uh, and our building inspector does issue citations for violations. Uh, this addition to the code would allow police officers to also issue a citation so that the burden wouldn't fall only on the building inspector who takes vacations and is not always available to issue citations. So that is what we're asking for today.
Okay, we don't have a code enforcement officer in the building department, so that's maybe allow us to use the police department. Yeah, this is one of those crossover-type sections. You know, the, the focus from a zoning perspective is parking only on approved surfaces, so you have an approved surface, whether it's asphalt with a proper base, but it's also potentially a parking, right, a parking regulation. Typically, those are enforced by two different sets of people, so you need to loop it in.
And I have gotten some complaints about this recently, uh, so it'll be helpful to have an additional tool to address it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question on this? Um, sorry, Rich. So we've had construction and we've had like a dump trailer parked, but our house is very much like Billy Purmit everywhere. Is that covered under this or is it an exclusion or, because it's?
You mean where there's construction not going?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's covered.
Okay.
I don't know exactly.
I didn't see it exactly in there, but.
It wouldn't be covered here. It would be part of your construction right now.
Okay.
Because you have to have vehicles that are there when.
Right. Okay.
Or dumpster that.
Yeah.
Any others?
Catherine?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triber?
Yes.
And Trusty Sodder?
Yes.
Okay, well, that takes us to financial reports, which the warrants list, of course, is in the packet. Any questions can go to Brandis or Erica. Uh, we'll start out with reports. Uh, briefly, I'll just start out, we had a Flag Day celebration on the fourteenth, which was very well attended. We had the VFW come out, Call of Guard, uh, do the ceremony, uh, very well represented with police department, fire department. We had, uh, Senator Castro was there, uh, representatives Ness and Muller, uh, and our Aaron Thrower from the township and Becky Gillum was there with, uh, for Don DeWitt, who wasn't able to attend. So, yeah, it was really well done. It was, of course, the hottest day so far this year, but we all weathered that. Um, and then, uh, Kimber Lyrics group did the singing, so it was really, it was really a nice, uh, event, so. Um, then, uh, Concert in the Park went off well, uh, it was up in my neighborhood, so that was really well attended as well. Appreciate the Public Works guys putting together that. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to ask about was, uh, we've gotten some emails concerning the, the Fox River efforts and so forth, Friends of the Fox, and I'm drawing a blank on Karen, um, yeah, yeah, from, uh, can't remember the name of the group? Oh my God. Anyway, um, I was thinking of, you know, at a future, uh, committee, the whole upcoming, we can kinda kick around some ideas on how we wanna get involved in that and, uh, see what our, uh, longer-term philosophy or approach to, um, the riverfront would be for us. Beyond, like, Trusty Cunzi has, uh, experience with the, with the cleanup efforts and so forth, uh, but beyond that is, is not only recreation, but, um, maintaining the integrity of the, the shore and that's, you know, there's a couple of different ways to go about that, but, uh, that's one of the things that we want to talk about, so.
Yeah, I agree. It seems like, you know, we've talked about this, but now there's different groups and there's different things that are kinda happy. There's some inertia behind it that is easy for us to tag on and kinda put together a whole comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
In a vision of what, what we'd like to see.
And as a matter of fact, one of the other things too that we're gonna be talking about is the comprehensive plan for the village. That's a twenty-year document, basically. Uh, it's been since, I think, oh-two when we first put ours together, maybe oh-three. And, uh, I don't recall the last, when I had read, when I first came on the board in oh-seven, uh, there was really nothing that touched on the, the river and the management of it. Uh, so we might be able to include in the next go-round of the comprehensive plan, the river and what we need to look to.
At one point there was, but it wasn't necess- there were some things kicked around, but it wasn't necessarily publicized.
Yeah.
And because we had other big, bigger fish to fry at the time.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, way bigger.
Yeah, a lot of things going on, but, yeah, I mean, it was, it was cleanup efforts which really helped, but that's just an ongoing maintenance kind of thing, so, uh, there's other things that we can be doing, so. And then also too, uh, some of these groups, they'll, they can come to us and help, you know, put to, put together some direction for it.
Some resources.
Yeah, exactly, so. So let's go round real quick. Andy, let's start with you.
Uh, I wanted to report that, uh, the Blues Barbecue Fest was very successful. I'd never seen parking get all the way to my house for a downtown event before, so, uh, it was packed. Um, and I went, it was very entertaining, good music. And then the other, uh, thing I was gonna throw in there was kind of what you're talking about of, uh, wanting to hear eventually the next steps on that green framework that we adopted, like targeting which goals. It seems like that could play into figuring out which kind of goals to like put into cement that we can actually keep chipping away at.
Right.
Uh, but that's all.
Trish, what do you got?
I went to Duke's too. It was awesome. It was cool. Um, but I ran into an older couple the other day that said they used to live here ten years ago and they said they wanted me to extend how impressed they are with the downtown and they live in Geneva now, but they are back here for a little bit and said, it's awesome and keep doing what you're doing, so that was pretty cool to see. So that's it.
Cool, cool. Well, if we got Geneva to emulate, we've got a ways to go, but we'll get there.
Yeah, we're impressed.
Rich, what do you got?
No report.
No report. Kathleen?
Um, yeah, I volunteered also at, um, Duke's on Friday and it was, um, it was just people coming in and out, the money, the amount of money that going to charity and the weather was kind of.
Friday rain.
Questionable, but it cleared up and got really good. Um, and, um, it's getting more and more organized every year and I think, and it was great to see the depot lawn also open and available for people to, um, kinda hang out at as things got crowded or, or busy. Um, the other thing just came up today, um, with, um, this, we've got an infestation of gypsy moths that, um, Maurice Martin and Nancy, um, told, uh, who live on, on Bonny Dundee, actually they're on Maxwellton, but, um, the, the, it's, it's a really critical, um, issue with it destroying some of our old growth oaks, of which we have, I have twenty-two on my property alone. They have twenty-two on their property. We back up to the open space and guess what? The open space, Library Springs, um, you know, is been working on re-establishing the oak, you know, kind of, um, fields that used to be there and getting rid of all sorts of other, um, uh, invasive species, um, working with, with their volunteers. And so, you know, they're doing as much as they can. Um, I know Phil's gonna be seeing their property, um, you're welcome to come by mine as well, um, whenever you're doing that tour, but I'm, I'm, number one, would like to make sure that we're doing an education campaign, um, with this because I was driving by and walking my dog and I noticed they had burlap wrapped about on their trees and I'm like, what's this? And this is a way to stem the caterpillars getting up into the trees. So anyways, it's, it's, she's thoroughly researched, she's passed on a great deal of information, so if we could get kind of an education campaign going as well as seeing what we can do, understanding if we can't get on a list for spraying or when the windows for spraying are, are the best, um, at least getting the, um, residents that want to protect their trees.
Are the oaks the only ones they're going after?
Apparently, apparently.
Just wondered if there's something we can do with the IEPA, be able to give us any information or direction on how to handle it?
I've been in contact with the Department of Agriculture back then, Zoom Teams Meeting several months ago about it and in fact, we had another resident reach out to me, I think the last year-ish, we had a form of call, I'll have to look it up, um, it was twenty-one. And so the state of Illinois has been involved in trying to put a project together. Um, typically the treatment for this is, uh, insecticide via plane, essentially some type of.
Oh, dusting, drought.
At least it was years ago with another community that reported how they handled that, so it's a little more involved and certainly I'll, I'll reach back out to the state of Illinois and see what I can find out from kind of what things are and.
Yeah, just wondering how quickly these things operate, you know?
Well, you know, she was saying, and I'm just reading secondhand the research that she's done, is that a stressed or older tree can succumb like within a year if there's a, if there's a big infestation on the tree. And over three years, if it's not treated, it will, and it will definitely impact the tree and the health of the tree. So our time is really short, you know, so it's not murder hornets, but, um, sorry, I'm so upset about this, I have to choke. But, um, you know, that, it's, it's a huge character, characteristic of our town, our neighborhoods, um, and, you know, Prairie Stone and, and that whole, this whole area is just known for its oak forests, um, that we're native.
You need an ordinance against the gypsy.
Well, it is very concerning and I was appreciative that the resident brought it up and, and shared with us what she had shared. And Phil and I will continue to discuss it and come back to the board with some findings and some potential actions.
That'd be great, yeah, but in the meantime, if we could also get out in the newsletter, um, some education to the residents that do have their, have these trees that, I mean, we spend, we spend money, you know, trimming them and, and treating them for other issues, um, and cleaning one of these things up is thousands of dollars if they go.
Right.
You know.
Oh, just take it down or whatever? Oh, yeah.
Ten thousand dollars, you know, it's just crazy.
Bugs that, the gypsy moth.
Yeah, right, yeah, well, these, there's a biological that is what sprayed, um, that is, um, only affects the gypsy moths and bees and dogs and everything else are fine, people are fine. So, um, that's all I had.
Okay, great. Sarah?
Um, my thanks to Phil and his team for setting up the blocking around the chair, for the Arts Council for getting it going, and Andy, Cam, and Mary K. Harvey for helping me when I was falling apart. Um, but the chair is painted and I've seen a lot of photos on, on social media this weekend about it and so it was pretty cool. We had some people coming up to us while, while we were painting saying it's the first time they've ever seen the chair, which I thought was just Sarah. I'm like, it's large and red, how did you guess that? Um, but my thanks to everybody for getting that going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting it, getting it going.
It's done.
That was it?
That's it.
Okay. Lance?
What you got?
Nothing. Franco, anything? No. Joe?
For report.
All right, Brandis?
Uh, we will be interviewing for our county position this week, next week, so fingers crossed.
Phil, you got anything else? No? Chief?
Uh, so today, for the first time in six years, we have a new recruit officer starting in the Spurs Law Enforcement Academy.
All right.
His name's Ryan Fleury and he's going to be supporting the future board meeting. Uh, he'll be in the academy for the next sixteen weeks.
Congratulations.
Good luck, Ryan.
And Erica, welcome back.
Thank you.
Much needed vacation. Sorry we have to end it, but, hey, all things, we had it coming. Only the good news, what you got?
Uh, just two, two announcements. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is interrupted by the Fourth of July, so our next board meeting will be July eighteenth. Today is Juneteenth. Uh, it's definitely an oversight that we scheduled a board meeting on a federal and state holiday, so we'll revisit that for next year and acknowledge the mistake that was made there, so that is my report.
Cool, yeah. All right, well, I don't believe, oh, well, next thing is the public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, executive session I don't believe we're going into, is that the case?
I don't have anything that must have been.
Wonderful, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Thank you all.
Phil?